And council, remember that one of the first things that will happen is there'll be a roll call. So if you're muted, you'll have to unmute to indicate your presence.
I didn't think about running my agenda. So now we've got to switch back and forth from this screen to the agenda.
Alright, it's six o'clock. I would like to open the regular city council meeting. Before I open, I would like to make a statement due to COVID-19 pandemic emergency. We have to handle our city council meeting much differently than we usually do. Due to for protection of the public and the city staff. Now I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Hagler, to give a brief explanation of to the public.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference in compliance with the state and county shelter in place or shelter at home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order N dash two nine dash two zero, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video or telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents can submit written public comments via email to pubcom, that's P U B C O M, at cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received prior to 5:30 PM today will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item subject to the customary five minute time or five minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting. And we're looking at ways to expand options for public comments at future meetings. So if you have submitted a public comment prior to this meeting, it will be read. If you submit a public comment, we'll be watching for them during the meeting and we'll be reading them. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Now I would like to call the meeting in order. Tina, may I roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor Lozano?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Lamson?
Here.
Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Please rise for the silent player and flag salute. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, next agenda item is Tina may have a replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, April tenth at nine AM and Saturday, April eleventh at nine AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Next agenda item is council, any agenda approval, addition and deletion. Alright, next agenda item is there is no presentation. Tina may have a public comment.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via emails to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five minute time limitation. For those emails received prior to the 5:30 PM on April seventh. We did receive three public comments. Not on agenda items. I will read them at this time. The first one is from Gail Weber for the extravaganza. Last Saturday, April fourth, would have been the 11th annual Galt Extravaganza. Unfortunately, it was one of the many events that were canceled due to COVID-19 pandemic. Galt local would like to acknowledge and thank the many sponsors who supported this free community event. Banner Bank, Best Western Galt Inn, Rooster's Bar and Grill, BSA Troop one 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 nine, Cow Waste Recovery Systems, CERT, Laurel Chamber and CSD Fire, Domino's Pizza Gold, Joe's Race Logo wear, Express Type and Graphics, Farmers and Merchants Bank Galt, Fitness Pro Galt, Galt Lions Club, Galt Parks and Recreation, Galt Police Department, Galt Public Works, Galt Sunrise Rotary, Galt Youth Commission, Iron Dragon Tactical School, King Sound Productions, New Hope Senior Village, Papa's and Wings, Real Life Church, River Rats, River Brewery, The Galt Herald and Walmart of Lodi. Thank you, Gail Weber.
Thank you. Next agenda item is E.
I have two more.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. Next one is from Catherine Harper. Hello, I'd like to offer the following comments. The Greer Basin, as well as the soccer fields at Walker Park and then tennis courts at Galt Community Park should remain open during the pandemic. Kids and families need space to run around in light of the other closures. We have no park structures, museums, place plate, play places, sports or school. The governor's order includes priority for outdoor exercises. And if golf courses can remain safely open and according to county rules, then so can field. Members of the same household can safely play there. The Galt police, the Galt police are often hanging out in those spaces. They can ensure no big groups of unrelated people congregate. The taxpayers of Galt support these spaces and they need to be available during this challenging time. The goodwill of the people cannot be maintained over a long period of time. And if the options become more and more limited, I would encourage you to keep the psychological health of your citizens in mind. Thank you, Catherine Harper. And one more. This is from Rudy Vacarezza, Cow Waste Recovery Systems. Hello, I am Rudy Vacarezza, the owner and officer of California Waste Recovery Systems, Galt Solid Waste Service Provider. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our industry statewide is asking for relief from the state of California so that we can continue to provide a vital and essential service to the public. Last week, we sent each council member, each council member, a letter outlining the purposes along with some letter templates to the governor and key legislators. We would very much appreciate your support and ask you to execute and forward the previously furnished letters as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And I also like to thank you, everybody giving us a public comment through the email. You know, it is the process change, but certainly we will take it seriously whatever on the public comment. Next agenda item is reports by council members or a regional board meeting and committee. I would like to ask Vice Mayor Lozano if he have anything on the regional committee.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick things. We had a Secog board meeting on March nineteenth and that was done by talked about the regional housing numbers and the board approved the the numbers that day. And so the moderate and lower income housing numbers are now approved for the region. So we can move forward with that. And then just a couple of other I that we took care of in terms of operational items given COVID-19 and allowing the CEO of the organization a little bit more flexibility with procurement issues. And so that the board didn't have to convene as a large group. Should he need to move on on some items. So that was that for that board meeting. And then I did miss the policy and innovation committee meeting last Monday, the thirtieth. But we will have another one in a couple of weeks and I'll report back on that when when that is done.
Thank you. It councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, I had a teleconference meeting for the Sacramento County Public Library Authority a couple of weeks back. Was the first time we did that, obviously, in light of what's going on. And we basically agenda item specific, there were several, but the main item was regarding the closures of the public libraries. It was a, it was a very big decision. We had probably 200 people on the call, on a video call such as this. And we had dozens and dozens of other comment and, you know, library is an important thing to the community. And we went over the closure and how the closure would affect workers. Talked about how workers were going to get paid, if they were going to get paid, use of sick time, PTO time, and so on and so forth. So we did vote to close the library and approved the paying of for two week period until initial, until we could reassess the situation and figure out there was going to be state help or anything beyond that. So it was a very difficult decision, but one that we had to make to protect the volunteers and the workers in the library. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson?
Yes, we had a online meeting with the air quality board and some of the concerns, it was a very short meeting. Some of the concerns are that the Trump administration is going to go back to some of the Obama administration mandates for air quality. And it's, they're a little bit stricter. It's going to be hard to address that. So we have to figure out how we're going to deal with that. We canceled the youth commission meeting due to the COVID and hopefully we can have a Zoom meeting if we're not back in business for the youth commission coming up soon. That's it.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. The next agenda item is F consent calendar. Tina, may I have a view that consent calendar, please?
Accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a fifteen month contract with an option for a one year extension with Hill Brothers Chemical Company for the supply and delivery of magnesium hydroxide in an amount not to exceed forty eight thousand ninety six dollars and thirty cents for the remainder of fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty and one ninety two three eighty five point twenty per year for fiscal year twenty twenty one and fiscal year twenty one twenty two. Approved designation of applicants agent resolution for non-state agencies, Cal OES one thirty and designate the city manager, police chief and public works director as the city's authorized agents.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Orange motion by councilmember Farmer, second by councilmember Campion?
It was a, it was actually moved by Lozano, I believe.
Yeah, Paul, I was the one that moved the.
Alright, second vice vice mayor Lozano, you know, sometimes it's hard to listen, sorry about that. And Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five two zero. Thank you. And next agenda item is schedule matter notice of public hearing. There is no notice of public hearing. Regular calendar. City manager's office in what update on coronavirus COVID-19, Mr. Hagler, city manager? City manager out there?
Forgot about my own mute button. Sorry about that. Mayor Sandu, members of the council, good evening. The update related to COVID-19 is as up to date as we can bring it today. The city activated its emergency operations center related to COVID-19 on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Since then, the city has been actively monitoring the situation with the Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services for activities related to local response to COVID-19. As of today, April seventh, two thousand twenty, Sacramento County reports five hundred and twenty five infections with COVID-19, twenty one deaths as a result of COVID-19. And the county also reports five cases of COVID-19. In Galt. The Sacramento County cases remain on the increase each day. Today, Sacramento County released a revised stay at home health order through at least May first, two thousand twenty. The new order calls for additional actions and restrictions related to social distancing. The city will post the new order on its website so that the public can view and read that new order. Some of the items included in the new stay at home order issued by the Sacramento County Health Officer include a requirement of removing or otherwise eliminating picnic areas in public. a requirement of removing or otherwise eliminating picnic areas in public parks, a prohibition on group play, that is recreational activities that would use sporting fields and constitute group play. It prohibits people from leaving their residence except for the express purpose of items approved in the order. And it prohibits public gatherings, public or private gatherings of any number of people occurring outside the home with limited exceptions as specified in the order. The county health officer indicates that the revised order is based on evidence of increasing infections within the county. San Joaquin County, against which the Sacra, the, excuse me, the city limit line resides, is reporting 217 COVID-19 infections today and 13 deaths. Notwithstanding the Sacramento and San Joaquin County stay at home orders, the governor of the state has issued a statewide stay at home order that operates until such time that he rescinds it. That is to say, the governor's stay at home order does not currently have an end date. All Californians under the governor's order are to stay home subject to the limitations of his order or the more stringent limitations in any county issued order. And so the Sacramento County Health Officer indicates in her order today that not only is she extending the date for Sacramento County to at least May 1st, but she is identifying that there may be more stringent requirements in her order that apply to the people of the county than are in the governor's order. So we encourage everyone to take a look as soon as we get that order posted to our website so that they can become familiar with the laundry list of items in that order that the health officer prohibits with limited exception. The city opened the Galt Market to vendors last week that provide produce, essential household items, and personal hygiene items. And the use of the market for this purpose, for these limited purposes is approved in both the governor's and the county health officers' orders. Approximately 30 vendors have participated thus far. The market provides a wide open air environment. Vendors are spaced 30 feet apart. The walking aisles are 50 feet wide. Distancing of vendors at 30 foot intervals helps to ensure that customers maintain social distancing. Announcements to maintain social distancing are consistently made over the market's loudspeaker. Vendors set up in a manner that allows for foresighted access of customers to the items that they're selling. The market is operational for community access to food and essential household items only. We believe that the market's open air atmosphere and the setup that I have described increases social distancing as opposed to diminishes it for people who want to purchase produce, fruits, vegetables, other necessary household items. The city's essential services are operating normally with no interruptions and that includes police, water, wastewater, storm drain, and the support services of the various departments to help make that happen. The city has instituted limited telecommuting where that is available and viable for employees to continue in service to the community. We can see from the cases in both Sacramento and San Joaquin counties that the safest course of action is for residents and businesses to strictly adhere to the provisions of those county health officer orders. Now is not the time to pretend that the crisis has passed or that it is okay to relax the discipline of the stay at home orders. COVID-19 represents a clear and present danger to those in our community with underlying health conditions and the elderly. It is very possible for people, up to 25% of those infected with COVID-19, to carry and spread the virus even though they don't display actual symptoms. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Just have a question. I did briefly read the new restrictions that came out from the county about an hour ago. But I wasn't able to look through it really closely. I just kind of skimmed over it. Do you recall what the guidelines were? You mentioned, I, what caught my eye was the gathering of any, of any people except family. I think there was a number, but I, I do see people out in the community, family, you know, three, four, five people in the family, you know, riding their bikes, walking, whatever, which are, you know, the family, but I, I just, is there any clarification on that? Because I feel like the problem is a lot of people get misinformation from these mandates and it's hard.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you for, for the question. There is some clarification to that. And, you know, if you're from basic household, you can, if you want to go for a walk or something like that and maintain social distance from others.
Can anyone else hear him? Okay.
Or prohibited, except for the limited purposes expressly permitted in the order. And so some of the express purposes are to obviously go out buy food to attend a medical appointment or to attend to someone who is ill. And or if you are in a essential service, you work in service field, you can obviously be out for that. But the recreational activities. And one of the things that's prohibited is use of recreational facilities that encourage gathering, including but not limited to playgrounds, outdoor gym equipment, picnic areas, barbecue areas, tennis and pickleball courts, rock parks, climbing walls, pools, spas, shooting and archery ranges, gyms, disc golf, and basketball courts is prohibited outside of residences. And all such areas shall be closed to public access, including by signage and as appropriate by physical barriers. So this, I think, addresses both your question and the public comment that we received earlier this evening.
Does it address golf courses? You said disc golf, but did you mention, because that's been a big controversy with Dry Creek and they're in the county.
Yes. And at this time, the health officer has not included golf courses in the order. That is a little baffling to us, but it's not included in there at this time.
I would like, could you, Tom, reach out to Sac County about this? Because I just, I think it's a gray area that we need to get clarification. I know that Dry Creek is not in the city limit. But, you know, it's in such close proximity and it's, it's, it's been the topic of much discussion in the last few days. And there's been some people, you know, not understanding why that's allowed and but it's, you know, form of exercise, so on. So if you could reach out to Sac County to try to get some clarification on that so that we could know how to answer that question, I think.
Sure. And so we have reached out to them, but let me ask our community development director, Chris Arias, to provide the update with respect to Dry Creek Golf Course.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, the clubhouse is in the city limits. It's in city of Galt. The, the majority of the holes are not, so you see the course in San Joaquin County. But we do work with the golf course closely. We were unsure initially after we got complaints about the course being open, if it was deemed an essential service. And the county indicated that it had been. So Sacramento County has determined that golf courses, at least prior to today, that it was an essential service and can remain open. We just did see this new revised order that included disc golf, but not regular golf. So we have inquiries in clarifying whether or not they meant to include regular golf. And I did get a response from the health official and they are actually trying to get further clarification. So one thing I would say is stay tuned at this point. But the fact that they specified disc golf and not regular golf in the narrative indicated to me that they have every intent to leave it alone at this point and let it operate. But I do have a inquiry in asking county health officials.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I just think it's important because I do think that one of the big problems with how things have been, these directions have been put in place is there, there's a lot of gray areas and people are asking a lot of questions, how to interpret them. And, and I wish, I know we have no control over how specific they are in some areas. But hopefully they'll clarify and if things get stricter, they can become more precise with the direction, people can clearly understand them. So that's the only question I have, Tom.
Any other council member have any other question regarding this?
Yeah, so I think Armando could answer it. So we have about 30 vendors out of the flea market. How many do we usually have?
We have somewhere, I think typically between 250 and 300.
Oh, okay. So the farmer's market is much smaller. Thank you.
Yes. And, and just thanks for asking that question because one of the things that I guess I would also want to make clear is prior to opening the market last week, we worked with county health officials to come up with a formula that would provide for our provide for our ability to open the market for the provision of these essential service items. One of the things as an emergency management team, we were cognizant of is the need to marshal resources in support of a community during a crisis, whether that's pandemic like we're in or an earthquake or a fire or anything else. And it was becoming clear to us in our daily review of what was taking place within the community that stores were being bought out of a large supply, whether it was an essential household item or whether it was produce or things like that. And so we saw this as a means to, if appropriately implemented, to provide the community with a safe alternative for how they could procure these essential items. And so the county health officer agreed with our plan and that's what we've put in place.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Anybody have any other question? Mr. Hagland, I have a question not for this one because the system sometime we cannot hear you, anybody over watching IT or who is?
You can't hear me?
Can hear, but sometime I think the same thing with the other council member. So I'm listening, anybody watching, overwatch that the IT or?
I think it's.
Did I cut out on a significant portion of my update?
Yeah, just a little bit, but not, but I'm worried about when we meeting going forward.
Yes. And that's one of the things that we, we deal with, you know, so some of this, some of you probably are operating over wireless and that can get spotty. And one of the things that is, has been taking place is that everyone's staying at home. And there's probably a lot of streaming videos and, and people taking up the bandwidth of the pipeline. And so we may run into those issues from time to time. And if that occurs during a meeting, what I would suggest is that you ask the staff member to repeat that portion of, say, the staff report and, and we'll let you know if, if council members cut out so that we can be sure that we're getting as, as clear a message on these items out as possible.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next agenda item to meet.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, just a comment on the last item on the agenda, the coronavirus update. I appreciate Tom's continued updates, the daily updates and all the work that all the staff has done, not only with the market, but, you know, in our police department and, and folks that are out working hard every day trying to, to manage this thing that we call the coronavirus that we are both certainly in our community and the nation not, not accustomed to. So thanks for all your hard work and, and that's for all the staff members. I know I've told Tom that several times to pass along a thanks, but I want to publicly thank not only our staff members, but the community for their patience.
They are very hardworking and we are in constant contact. We, we, we brief each other seven days a week.
Thank you. Any other council member have any question? Thank you. Next agenda item is subject, I think H2. I receive update on new development, community facility, district creation, approved special tax consultant service. Who can be Mr. Hagland?
Yes, all, I'm happy to provide that report. And so this item comes before the council. It really is an item that seeks first and foremost, and really the only action tonight is about updating a, an existing agreement that we have with the firm that's providing the fiscal analysis to the new development, community facilities district that we're putting together. And so I'm going to have Chris Arias, our community development director, talk a little bit about what the CFD is all about with the understanding that you're not approving the CFD tonight. But I want Chris to give that thumbnail, just bring this back up in, in everybody's memory. And then I'll talk about the agreement that we're requesting you approve with the, the group providing the various fiscal analyses that'll be part of the CFD. Chris?
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I'll give a real quick update on this new development CFD. Basically, we are still in a development phase of this creation of the CFD. The intent of the CFD is to have all new development join this CFD instead of annexing into the current 2005, one CFD and also lighting and landscape district. So we will no longer, once this district is formed, have new development join those other LLDs or CFDs. And the reason for that is we believe that the new CFD will better serve the city by, you know, covering costs, not only for the new development, but also the impact of the new development on the existing city. So this, it'll be a better mechanism for new development, basically to pay their freight going forward. We are still in the development phases of it, so we're not ready to present to council those fiscal analysis that Tom had mentioned. So when we are ready with those, we will come back to the council at a separate separate meeting for your consideration. So that's really it is basically it's a new CFD for all new development going forward. It will, existing land in the city, existing development will not join it. It is only for new development.
Thank you, Chris. And so some of the, the CFDs are a legal mechanism under which essentially a special tax is imposed upon new parcels and that tax will pay for. And that tax will pay for certain types of maintenance within the, the boundaries of this community facilities district. And this CFD distinguishes itself, as Chris has indicated, from the earlier CFDs that were much more limited or the lighting landscape districts, which as we all know, don't carry the, the types of CPI or inflator that is necessary to keep up with the cost of providing the various services. And so this staff agenda item is about approving a updated agreement with Willdan Financial Services to provide us with the fiscal impact assessments that define ultimately the underlying tax or special tax that becomes part of the CFD. And so they take a look at all the various items that would be financed within that. They take a look at the, the, the cost to put those improvements in and come out and, and then of course, look to the future over the long-term maintenance of all of those items or the provision of maintenance for those items by the city. And that ends up resulting in a, an amount that then is placed on the, the new parcel. It's again, considered a special tax. It is part of the property tax process. It appears on the property tax rolls over the long term. But Willdan has the, has been working on this particular CFD for a number of years and the, the, the amount of time that's passed is really just a function of the fact that there weren't, because these costs are paid for by the developer and not the city, the developers weren't necessarily always interested in moving the process forward because they were unsure themselves perhaps when their new subdivisions might be moving forward. And so what's happened is we've reached the end of the timeframe of the initial Willdan agreement. And we wanted to be able to have a new one that updates that. And as Chris indicated, we have some subdivisions that we're anticipating that are very close to pulling the trigger and be moving forward with their subdivisions. And so we want to have all this in place when they do. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Tom. Mr. Mayor, if I may. In terms of the CFD, what is the projected cost recovery over time? As you know, or as we all know, the lighting landscape districts do not cover their cost stand today. However, at one point in time they did. And so what, what, in terms of the CFD and, and I understand it's new development. But what, what did they look at in, in, in that regard as far as covering costs over time?
So what they're doing is they're, they're establishing a baseline. What are we spending today? What is the income to the city? What's the impact of, you know, how does sales tax take part? You know, or, or take a piece of that, all of the various revenue streams. And so they end up coming up with the impact essentially of this new development over and above what would otherwise exist if the development didn't go forward. And so this, the CFD applies to these discrete subdivisions based on the impact and how adding that number of homes and the various maintenance and, and service items that the city provides, how that's going to increase cost to the city. And so then what you're trying to do is, is recover for that. And so part of their process is to look down the road, to look at what those inflators should be and account for those in a long-term fiscal analysis that gives rise to the initial amount, so year one amount, if you will. And then they, they, they provide for a inflator in addition to that to meet anticipated costs over time. And so these are, these have been in place and largely came into being as a result of trying to figure out how to fund community services, city services after Prop thirteen. And so new development really had to pay its way. No longer was sales tax or property tax going to be sufficient to pay the way of new development like it, like it did prior to Prop thirteen. And so ever since, you know, the, probably the, the, the mid eighties when this began to, to really come about, there is a great body of work and study and effort that is coalesced into a best practice approach. And so they use those best practice approaches to try to come up with long-term estimates of, or, or long-term, I shouldn't say estimates, but mechanisms for making sure that the special tax keeps up with the cost of rendering services. And that's all contained within the fiscal impact analysis that, say, Willdan would prepare for the CFD.
And thank you for that explanation. I, I think it's important to point out that this is a, this is a tax that a company owner today who may be a developer is going to incur that they did not incur, they did not know about it prior to their, to their taking possession or ownership of that property. However, those that then purchase from the developer, that, that information is upfront and they know about it. It's not an additional tax once they move in. It is, it is known and part of the, the process in which you, when they buy their house. So I, I think that's important. And I've heard, you know, over my time on the, on the other elected board that I sat on, we, we did CFDs. And, and I've heard, well, it's not, you know, it's not going to be something that is, is going to be a big deal because it will be paid for. Well, it does get paid for and it's usually by the, the end user. But, but it's, it's not without the end user knowing that that parcel tax is there. And so I appreciate that. I just want to point out a couple of other things. The boundaries of this CFD really in, in my mind, as I understand it, don't really have boundaries. I mean, they do as soon as they're voted into the CFD, the property. But then they, they don't have to be properties that are next to each other. They can be throughout the city. And so as we think about lighting and landscape districts and, and since you brought that up, Tom, you really need to think about it differently because this isn't really just for one particular area. It is any new, any new development that comes in, whether it's Dry Creek or Cardozo or any of these others that aren't next to each other. And so I think that's pretty important as we move forward to, to continue to remember.
Right. Yeah. And, and so we will, all of this is fully they, they, they know exactly what the additional assessment is. And on the, on your last point, we certainly will.
But Tom, I have a quick question on the, as, as far as the fiscal impact analysis, will it include a mechanism or a, a portion of, of funds collected to conduct updates of the fiscal impact analysis itself? To make sure that the fees that are collected are sufficient in order to fund whatever public improvements are, are being funded?
Well, yes, I mean, that's what we're trying to take care of in this initial creation of the CFD is to put in a process that can be periodically reviewed. Because really what you want your special tax to, to, to do is to, to pay for the services that are provided, obviously, number one. But if the inflation mechanism were to be such that it were, the, the amount paid were to, to begin to stretch beyond the amount required, you may not impose that portion of the special tax in that particular year. And so the, the, the idea is to create a a, a way at the outset that clearly defines how increases will occur. The, 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 the timing of that occurrence, which could be every year essentially. But then, you know, there, there is an upper bracket on, on the amount of what that increase would be in, in any one.
Also on the, and this applies to, I understand, new development, which are basically vacant lands, they would be vacant lands. Then there would be a trigger event at which time the special tax would be triggered. And I don't know whether that's the subdivision of the land or it's going to be permit issuance or it's going to be a graduated. I mean, just do you have a sense of that, whether, whether there's a vacant land tax versus a built or partially built tax on, on units to be constructed?
Claire, do you recall? My recollection is we had discussion on that vacant land tax and that there was, once the CFD goes into, comes into fruition, that even the developer begins paying on that. But can you clarify that for me? Do you recall?
I believe you're correct, but I don't recall all of the details of it. You know, as you, as you said, we're still kind of working through all of those details. But that is absolutely a possibility.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that, Kurt, and, and maybe one of the things I should again, cover is that not all the details have been locked in or worked out. We're, we're still marching through that process. But I, I, I recall, we're working on two of the CFDs right now fairly actively. One is this new development CFD and then the other is the Liberty Ranch. And I, I'm, I'm pretty sure in both that we have a provision for a vacant land portion that ends up getting paid.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it just seemed like it would make sense. You know, you're going to be providing at least police services once the roads are constructed and you got a vacant, got vacant land. So I mean, there are services provided, although it is not a, you know, what would be the ultimate?
Services provided and infrastructure that has to be used and then maintained, even though there might not be a house directly in front of it.
Okay, that's, that's, I'm good. Thank you.
I have questions, Tom.
Okay.
So touching on a little bit of what Rich said is that these new CFDs, once formed, are not going to be geographic. I guess would be the right term. And so they're not going to be like our traditional LLDs, whether, you know, northwest side or east side or whatever, they're going to basically just be from, they'll best, they'll basically be tied to development from X time four, correct?
Yes, they'll, they'll be tied to each development that comes in. Everyone will need to go into a, into this new development CFD from, from the point at which you adopted on through.
And then the other two things were, so Kurt was asking, you know, certain details about what, what they're going to have. And I had a question about the escalator as well and if we were going to be able to revisit from time to time. But as I understand it, today we're basically just approving the, the approval to, to keep this going forward. If I'm understanding the staff report correctly, this, the players that were involved, the consultants were involved with this. One of them was the Willdan, which theirs was a minor contract, which then expired. And so we're needing to re-up that to keep them in the group and now start to push forward on this. So we're not actually voting on the creation of a CFD. That will be brought back to us to approve once those are created and we'll, we'll be able to vote in and approve that at time. We're just simply voting on the extension, more or less, or the, or the, or the, or the renewal of the contract with one of the consultants that's working on this process. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Okay, I think that's the only questions I had.
Any other council member have any other question? And Tom, I have just only the same thing. Sean asked the question, same thing. We are voting just that process start or when that process start the CFD?
Well, the process has started. We've been working on it. It's sort of been on again, off again, depending on when, you know, developers participating based on where they were at with their developments. But we're anticipating that this will come to you and then within the next couple of months. I mean, we're, we're actually very close. There are some, some of the details that I was indicating to council member Campion that we still have to work out, tie down, go through a, another iteration of, of the fiscal impact analysis. But you are right, as I was trying to set forth at the beginning of my comments, that this is really about a, updating an agreement with Will and not, not approving a CFD tonight. You, you will not be approving any CFD tonight. That will come to you with a whole body of work in a couple of different actions here within the next month or two is my estimation.
All right, thank you. Thank you for clarification. Any other council member, anybody have any question on this subject matter? If it's not, Tina, could you read the recommendation action, please?
Receive update and adopt a resolution creating a new development, community facility district, CFD related to funding of city services in new project areas and improve renewal of a special tax consultant services agreement.
So moved. Is Miss, is council member? All right, moved by council member Campion. Anybody do a second?
Second.
The second by council member Lamson. And Tina may have a rule call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Council member Farmer.
Aye.
Council member Campion.
Aye.
Council member Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carried with five two zero. Thank you. Our next agenda item is Public Works Department. Approve the transportation expenditure plan for the proposed twenty twenty transportation sale tax ballot, Mayor. Mr. Selly.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and council members. Tonight, I'm pleased to have with me Mr. Will Kimpton, who is the executive director of the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Having been a former director of Caltrans, as well as served in executive roles at multiple transportation agencies throughout the state, Mr. Kimpton's name is indelibly synonymous with transportation in California. Tonight, Mr. Kimpton will provide you with a presentation on the transportation expenditure plan for a proposed transportation sales tax ballot measure this fall. After his presentation, Mr. Kimpton and I will be available to answer any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Will.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for hosting here, Public Works Department, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Will Kimpton, the executive director of the Sacramento Transportation Authority. As your staff report indicates, you're being asked tonight to approve the transportation expenditure plan that was tentatively adopted by the STA Board on March eighteenth. Approval of in ordnance and placement of a sales tax measure on the ballot will come later through action of the authority and the Board of Supervisors. And so, Tom, if I could ask you to go to the first slide, you're already there, so thank you. Wanted to just give you a little bit of background on building the plan. We conducted more than a year of outreach efforts. We met with, with over a hundred and fifty organizations and individuals in, in, in that timeframe. Conducted a public opinion survey in October of last year that included fifteen hundred Sacramentoans, which is a pretty large survey instrument. We held regular meetings with a professional advisory group on which Mike Selling sits and Vols Public Works Directors and other senior staff from the county's eight cities and local and regional recipient agencies. We held detailed meetings with the ad hoc committee of the STA Board to, to get input on the various issues that, that came up in the process. And we actually conducted five public Sacramento Transportation Authority Board meetings to allow for a substantial amount of input. Next slide, please. The process that we're following is required by, in the Public Utilities Code of the state of California, and it requires support of a majority of the city councils representing a majority of the county's incorporated population and the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors this morning approved the, the expenditure plan. The STA's Board of Directors has voted to present this expenditure plan for approval by the local jurisdictions in Sacramento County and after consideration by all of the local jurisdictions. And after consideration by all of the local jurisdictions, the board must adopt and implementing ordinance by a two-thirds vote. Sacramento County Board of Supervisors then, by a majority vote, places Measure A on the ballot, if that's what they choose to do. And the measure must be approved by at least two-thirds of the electorate in order to be enacted into law. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the Measure A transportation sales tax. It's a total of $8.4 billion over 40 years. There are 10 categories of activities, probably the most significant to a lot of folks, is the money going into local streets and roads. And you can see that's a substantial percentage of the total, about $3.9 billion. There's an additional amount of investment for transit. We've got the senior disabled transportation services included, supportive air quality activities, rail operations, and obviously the administration. The split is about 60% going into roads and about 40% going for rail and transit. Next slide, please. Now, when we talk about benefits to the local jurisdictions, there's a tendency to think only of those allocation amounts, the direct allocations amounts for the City of Galt are the first two items shown here. The $53.9 million for local street road repair and transformational system improvements, and the $8.4 million for local projects of regional significance. We asked our consultants to take a deeper look at the total program and determine what other benefits might be accruing to the City of Galt. And the determination is, with respect to all of the other activities that are included in the expenditure plan, it's a total of about $106 million over the life of the program. Now, there were assumptions made here in terms of how to split these dollars up over the various programs, but it does give you a better indication of what the total benefit is for the City of Galt as opposed to just those direct allocations. Next slide, please. The local projects and programs that are shown on this slide are projects that are eligible for money to be spent on out of this program. That doesn't mean that, that all of the money must go to a single project or that you must spend dollars on, on, on each of the projects. But it is a listing of projects on which you can spend Measure A transportation dollars, that you can seek to leverage additional outside money, which is a key component of our plan in bringing outside resources to bear. And there's a list of these projects for the City of Galt here. Next slide, please. The local project of regional significance that you don't have the slide on, but you have a separate sheet that was attached to your report, is the Wallon Avenue State Route 99 interchange. And that's, that's a very important project to the City of Galt. And we had separately set aside in the plan $700 million for these kinds of projects for all of the local jurisdictions included in the transportation expenditure plan. I do want to say that, you know, before we go to the final action here, we are very mindful of the disruption and uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. I think hearing the discussion you had this, this evening, the toll on individuals, families, the economy and our quality of life has been unprecedented. However, our effort began with a goal of planning for the future of Sacramento County. And we believe we should continue to take the steps to move closer to that goal, not in spite of, but because of the current situation. While at some point it may be necessary to set aside this effort, we are moving forward in the meantime. And it seems reasonable to give the voters an opportunity to weigh in on this issue if we proceed. In addition, we do know that large-scale transfer, infrastructure programs can have a very positive impact on the economy. And over the next few months, we will be working with transportation stakeholders in Sacramento County to propose a package of improvements that can be implemented immediately if voters approve this measure. It is our hope that this measure can help get the county's economy moving again once we have defeated, have defeated this virus. So with that, we request your support for the resolution to approve the transportation expenditure plan for the proposed 2020 transportation sales tax ballot measure. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council member, do you have any question?
Yeah, I have some questions.
All right.
So the dispersal of funds, is it basically on, is it per city, like what Galt brings in will then be our funds that will then be available? Or is it all brought into one fund and then dispersed according to some other criteria? I might have missed that, so I apologize.
I know. So it's, it's all funds that are brought in that the Sacramento Transportation Authority then allocates per the expenditure plan. It's, it's by percentages for the major categories that you saw. The first or second slide, I think, includes those percentages. There is a formula allocation for the two components for the direct allocations based on population and lane miles for the distribution of the local streets and roads monies. That's similar with the current measure. And another formula that has been put in place for the local projects of regional significance.
Okay, so maybe I should be more specific. I, I'm just looking for layman's terms for people that are watching. So the sales tax, the half-cent tax collected from sales in Galt, in our community specifically, would then go into a larger fund, and then that would be dispersed according to a formula or whatever other means. It doesn't necessarily mean our money stays with us. So there's a chance that our money could be dispersed amongst another, another, another region within the county and their funds on our region and vice versa. Is that right?
Well, money that's collect, the money is centralized and dispersed by formula and allocations. I, I actually think Galt does very well in, under this particular approach. And the, the inventory of the roads is an important feature, particularly for the expenditure of dollars on taking care of the existing system. And so the lane miles and population has been a longstanding way of distributing those dollars that has been acceptable over the past several years of the previous measure.
Yeah, if I could just kind of add into that, Councilmember Farmer. Basically, the, the key component on the local streets and roads and transformational system, that formula is, is pretty much one-third population, one-third maintained miles of roads, and one-third what you might consider in layman's terms a return to source. So where the money was generated from. So, and, and as Mr. Kimpton noted, actually, I can, I can affirm that Galt is, is probably, you know, a net benefit in, in that way.
Okay, so a couple of other quick questions is, describe to me again real quickly, so the process. In the staff report, it talks about this being approved to push this forward to ultimately being on a ballot in November for the voters to approve. This has to be approved by the majority of councils? And then, so what, what constitutes, what constitutes a majority? And then beyond that, what's the next step beyond that? Or is it, or, or once these count, once the majority of the councils approve, it then is put on the ballot? Is that the very next step, or is there an intermediate?
No, no, there's, there is an interim step. So it's a majority of the cities, and in Sacramento County, we have seven cities. So we need to get the approval of four cities representing a majority of the incorporated population. Well, City of Sacramento has a majority of the incorporated population. So with the approval of the City of Sacramento, that box gets checked. But we still have to get the approval of three additional cities and the Board of Supervisors. And again, this is only for approval of the expenditure plan. So the next step, if we, if we pass that, this test, is to take the, the expenditure plan as part of the ordinance, which will be introduced actually at our meeting next week, but will not be voted on by the board until May 14th. And that requires a two-thirds vote of the Sacramento Transportation Authority in order to approve the, approve the ordinance. The next step in the process would be a referral from the authority to the Board of Supervisors to place the measure on the ballot. We would expect that that would take place, if we are going to proceed, in the middle of the summer, probably at either the July 14th or July 28th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. The deadline for placement on the ballot is August 7th.
Okay, how many cities have already, how many city councils have already voted on this?
We, we have been before the City of Sacramento, which has approved the expenditure plan, and we have been before the Board of Supervisors this morning, as a matter of fact, which approved the expenditure plan. Following the presentation here tonight, we'll be in Elk Grove tomorrow. We'll be in Citrus Heights on Thursday. We'll be in Folsom on April 14th and in Galt on the 20th. I'm sorry, in Rancho Cudopah on the 20th and Galt on the 28th. Not Galt, excuse me, Ileton on the 28th.
Okay, so just, just to recap for the people that are watching, because I know this is, I had a couple of emails on this, and people were just trying to understand what exactly this was. People think we're voting on a tax tonight.
You are not.
You're right. So we're basically approving, what, four cities have to approve. Then it gets, goes to, well, the Sacramento Transportation Authority would have to approve it, then make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, who then would have to approve that. If all those things take place, then it would go onto a ballot in November, would require two-thirds vote of the voters, which the people of the community, in order for it to pass. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Kemp, and thanks for coming down to Galt and providing the presentation. I have several questions in regards to the, the expenditure plan. First of all, you said that the County Board of Supervisors approved this morning?
Yes.
Was that, was that a unanimous vote?
No.
Okay.
Four to one.
What, four to one? Okay, I just have a quick, a couple of questions. One is, how is this plan different than the, the expenditure plan that was put forward to the voters in 2018 related to that transportation tax?
Actually, that plan was put forward in 2016, if that's the one you're referring to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was Measure B on the ballot. I think the major difference in this plan would be the amount of dollars being split between streets, roads, and highways and an investment in transit and rail. That measure was roughly 70% going for streets, roads, and highways, and 30% for other purposes. This measure, as I said earlier, it's 60% going for streets, roads, and highways, and, and 40% going for rail and transit. This measure also has some pretty tough restrictions on the requiring the expenditure of dollars on streets and roads or repair for the first five years. 90% of the money that's included in the local streets and road repair category has to go to, to road repair, unless the city can demonstrate that it has reached a particularly high bar of road maintenance. And then for the remainder of the program period, a total of 50% of the money has to go for road repair. So those, those are pretty strict requirements to make sure that we continue to spend a significant amount of these dollars on taking care of our existing road and street network.
And, and this is a 40-year plan as opposed to in 2016, wasn't it 30-year?
That's correct. Thirty or 35, but this is, this is a 40-year program. And the, the interesting feature that is actually in the existing measure that is continued in this measure is that every 10 years, there will be a review of the plan to make sure that it's addressing the appropriate needs. Forty years is a long time, and transportation as a technology could change in that, and in that period of time. And so it seems appropriate that there would be an opportunity to review. Are we spending the dollars in the right, on the right things and in the right direction?
Yeah, I just have another couple of questions. One has to do with the public outreach in October. There were several, I, I think you said over 1,000 residents in the county that were surveyed. How closely does this, this survey result? How closely do they align with the transportation expenditure plan?
Well, I think they, I, I think they align. The, the, one of the highest issues of concern for the voters is there is the existing system. But the voters are also extremely concerned about congestion, really. They're concerned about safe routes to schools. They're concerned about providing mobility for senior and disabled members of the community. Those are, I think, the four or five issues that scored the highest in the polling. So I think we've, what we've tried to do in this plan is develop a balanced approach that tries to address as many of the needs as we could in a responsible way.
I, I appreciate that. So this is the second iteration, though, of an expenditure plan. Is that correct? Or, and how much different are we on this one as opposed to the initial expenditure plan?
Well, this is probably, if you go, if you, in my experience, this is maybe the 30th version of an expenditure plan. This plan was first introduced, a plan was introduced in December. And it was, it was somewhat similar. But there have been changes made. And as I mentioned, we had five separate public meetings of the authority in January and February. And so there was a lot of input and a lot of changes made. It was, it's not, it's not a significant change, but it, it does have some things that are, that are different than what was originally proposed.
Okay, and, and, and as I understand it, this doesn't, isn't necessarily a plan that's going to, that has to move forward in 2020. There, is there a potential that it could move forward in 2022 election?
Well, if, if for some reason the, it's decided not to proceed with this plan, a, a plan could be developed, this plan could serve as a base for that. But a plan could be developed for 2022. Probably more likely in 2024, usually the experience from a political perspective, you know, an electoral perspective is that they try to do these measures in, during presidential elections. Voter turnout tends to be greater.
Okay, they, that's all I have for right now. I appreciate you're taking the time.
Sure.
Any other council member? Any other question? Mr. Kent, I have a question. You know, there's a plan originally, did you remember what was the difference between the potholes and road repair and transit?
I'm, I'm sorry, the difference between?
The original plan, you know.
Oh, okay.
You know, it was a lot of modification, and then there had a committee.
Right, there was, in the, in the initial plan, this go around, there was a higher percentage of money proposed for transit. And ultimately, that got reduced. If I remember the numbers correctly, it was about 42% that was proposed, 42 and a half percent proposed for transit. And we've ended up at, at the 60/40 level with 60% going to streets, roads, and potholes.
Yes, and, and, and that's why, you know, that mountain creep from 40 to 60% with road repair and potholes. It was mostly benefit to the small city like Rancho Cudopah, Citrus Heights, and Galt. And that's why there was a push to all small city because small city think, and that's maybe is a reality, not getting that much benefit from the transit. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, I think that's an accurate observation because the, those local streets and roads categories are allocated directly to the cities. So the more money that is going into streets and roads and highways, the higher the percentage that's going to be going to the, to the local cities directly. Now, again, there are indirect benefits that I think apply to everybody. But in terms of direct allocations, I think you're right.
All right, thank you. The other thing, if we approving this tonight, it's tentatively, we proving it's going to go back to the STA Board, and they can, they're going to prove, right?
They, they can. Yes, we'll go back to the STA Board. There can be no changes in the expenditure plan at, at this juncture, however. It's, as you approve it. uh at, at, at this juncture, however, it's uh, as you approve it, that's it. So can't go back to the STA board and be changed uh before they send it on the Board of Supervisors for placement on the ballot.
Uh, and the other thing is majority of uh, the people on STA from Sacramento City, right?
No, um, there are four representatives from the City of Sacramento. There are five members of the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the rest of the membership is uh, is outlying, uh, Elk Grove has two members and all of the other jurisdictions have a single member.
So the final approval is, uh, what's, or what percentage is, uh, you know, is a majority vote or a super majority?
No, the final approval for uh adopting the ordinance is a two thirds vote, which requires eleven votes of the sixteen members of the authority.
All right, thank you. Any other council member have any other question? Uh, Tina, we have any public comment uh, on that uh, on subject?
Uh, no, we do not.
All right, council, if there is no other public comment, uh, Tina may have, uh, do you there recommended action, please?
Adopt a resolution approving the Sacramento Transportation Authority Measure A Transportation Expenditure Plan for the proposed two thousand twenty transportation sales tax ballot measure as tentatively adopted by the Sacramento Transportation Authority.
All right, do we have a motion, please?
Our second.
Uh, who is uh, going to make the motion?
Page.
Councilmember Lamson, I'll make the motion, anybody in second?
Second.
Uh, who is that?
John Farmer.
Okay, move the motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
No.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion move, but motion passes by four to one.
Mister Mayor and members, thank you very much for your time, I enjoyed my visit to, down to Galt and um, look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, Mister Kemp, and thank you, thank you for. All right. All right, next agenda item is uh subject, approval of settlement agreement with the California Regional Quality Control Board, Central Valley Region and Supplemental Budget Appropriation for the Settlement Agreement related to the November twenty nineteen sanitary sewer overflow. Mister Selling, Public Works Director.
Mike, you have your uh, uh, audio is off.
Sorry about that, I thought I'd, unmuted. All right, uh, well, thank you again, Mister Mayor and councilmembers, uh, this item is to consider approving a settlement agreement with the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. The settlement agreement is the result of discussions between the city and the regional board relative to a sanitary sewer overflow, what we call an SSO, that occurred on November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. The SSO occurred due to a severe storm that triggered a series of power outages and surges, electrical surges, which effectively disabled the city's sewer monitors and alarms. Staff discovered the event early the next morning and followed all state protocols for cleanup and notification and subsequent report of the details of the event. The city took several corrective actions in an effort to prevent potential future occurrences, occurrences, including installing a separate phone line and an independent monitoring system at ten lift stations throughout the city. The state's initial fine was approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Through negotiations, the fine was reduced to approximately a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, of which the city was successful to be able to install additional monitoring equipment and to cover up to fifty percent of the fine amount. Consequently, the city is proposing to install the additional equipment at a cost of approximately seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, of which the fifty percent number, which is fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, will be applied toward the state's fine. The city will pay the state the other half of the fine, again, fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, uh, if approved by council tonight. Uh, staff and I are available to answer any questions, thank you. I believe Mister Mark Clarkson may also be on the line uh for any questions.
Uh, thank you, Mister Selling, Councilmember Vice Mayor Lozano, do you have any?
Yeah, I, I just have a, a real quick question. Um, y- you mentioned the initial fines and uh, or did you also happen to mention, it, it was cutting out a little bit on my end, did you also happen to mention the uh, the, the projected fines or what it could have been?
No, I did fail to mention that, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, the state, according to the letter that we initially received, the fine could have been uh somewhere around three million dollars maximum.
Okay.
So pretty significant.
Yeah, and I, I, I just wanna thank you, um, this is something that we were kept apprised of during closed session items or, or meetings uh throughout the time and uh, I appreciate your work and uh, and Miss Hood's work on this, along with everyone else that worked on it, but uh, to getting it to a resolution that we can, we can, uh, at least I can live with. Um, it could have been much worse and, and I appreciate all the proactive efforts that the Public Works Department's made since it happened before we got the letter and the improvements that were put into the system, uh, before we got the fine letter and uh, and to try to keep our community safe, and so I appreciate everyone's help on that.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of comments, yeah, I too, uh, this was like Rich said, this was something that happened uh, right after the election, actually before, uh, some of us were actually sworn in, in the first part of December, we were this is one of the first things I remember being um, privy to um, in the city. And uh, you know, I think we came out of this very well, I did a lot of research on this early on, I have a family member who works in wastewater uh for many years and uh, doing research on, you know, the amount of, the, the size of the spill and what other municipalities had been fined. Um, we, I, I was expecting it to be quite a bit more, um, I think this uh, we, we should be thankful that we um, were only uh penalized this amount. And also, I think that uh, I, I was happy to see that the city made, was very proactive in uh, putting, implementing safety measures before we were allowed to, you know, typically we could have just waited and let this whole process take place and then um, then this, the county would come to us and say, well, if you put these, these safety measures in place, maybe we'll put that towards the fine, so on and so forth, but we acted quickly, we came out of pocket right away, we put in extra, you know, um uh redundancies and things, which was, which was smart to, to make sure this didn't happen again, and I was happy to see that. And I, uh, that was something we supported early on, and um, after this whole thing is now culminated and, and ending, and winding down to what we are now, I'm happy with, with where we at and I, and like, again, I think we should be thankful that it's only this amount, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, any other council member?
So, Mike, I was kind of writing the numbers down, so the original fine was a hundred and twenty-three dollars, we put in um fifty-nine or seventy-one thousand, what do we actually have to pay directly to the state for the fine then?
So that would be the fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Okay, so that was a really nice job on um bargaining and negotiating and going back to them, and we, we appreciate that and um, hopefully that this won't happen in the future and we can keep our public safe, thank you so much.
Absolutely, yeah, no, I, I would echo, I think it was uh, uh, Vice Mayor Lozano or or who's uh comments and, and probably Councilmember Farmers as well, um, you know, for uh, Miss Hood and, and I give a lot of credit to Mister Clarkson too in uh, you know, meeting with the state and, and negotiating on our behalf.
I would like to remind everybody to, um, a lot of the public doesn't remember where this happened, but um, that this was not um deemed a negligent uh incident, uh, caused by negligence, this was basically a failure of some redundancies um that were in place and it just kinda was just the perfect storm, for lack of a better word, that lined up that, that caused this and that. And so, um, and I think that's maybe why the, the fine reflects that, if we had been negligent, it could have been significantly more, but I just wanted to add that for those of the public that didn't remember what this was regarding.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Councilmember Campion, you wanna add anything on that?
Oh, I think, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, I would like to thank you, Mister Selling, uh, interim uh city attorney. She did a really good job to negotiate on this one. And this was originally same thing, it's been a three hundred thousand dollar fine. And especially the state, uh, these fine very hard to reduce it. And the other thing, uh, on the report, I just let everybody know, this was, uh, I believe Selling was uh, not the director at that time, I said Mister Venkler was the director. Uh, Mister Venkler and uh Clarkson, they did a investigation on that and they cannot find any human error. There was something happen, you know, and we had to live with it. And the last question I will ask Mister Selling, uh, what we did so it will not happen on this kind of thing again?
Yeah, uh, basically, just to reiterate, uh, some of the redundancies that we put into the system is we have a satellite phone line now in addition to the normal landline. So if the landline were to go out, we would still have satellite connection. And then the other thing, uh, as I, I briefly mentioned, was we put what are called smart covers on ten of our lift stations around the city, but what those smart covers do is they can monitor the levels in the, in the uh sewer system and give us alerts, uh, you know, when, when the levels get to certain uh height or elevation in the, in the pipelines. And uh, and that way we can, we can uh, get out there and uh, and address what the issue is in a timely manner before it does start spilling over, so. So those are the initial uh steps that we've taken and uh, and then the plan would be, again, to install smart covers at some additional uh manholes uh throughout the city system with the uh, half of the fine money that we would uh, have to pay.
Thank you. Uh, if for any council member, any other comment, if it's not, I'm gonna move to the public comment. Tina, did we have any public comment uh through email?
Uh, no, we do not.
Thank you. Tina, could you read that uh, recommended action, please?
Adopt a resolution, one, approving a settlement agreement and stipulation for entry of administrative civil liability order with the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, RWQCB, Central Valley Region in case number R five dash two zero one nine dash zero five two zero, which includes a penalty in the amount of one hundred ten thousand seven hundred fifteen and allows for performance of an enhanced Compliance Action Project ECA in exchange for suspension of up to half of the penalty amount and further authorizes the interim city manager or his destiny to sign the settlement agreement. Two, authorizing the interim city manager or his destiny to sign the settlement agreement and implement the ECA, and three, approving a sup- supplemental budget appropriation of one hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventeen from Fund Zero Zero Seven, available fund balance, which will be used to pay for half of the RWQCB penalty amount in the ECA project.
Thank you. Do we have a motion out there?
So move.
Second. Third.
Uh, who was in the second?
Right here.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
You got your mic off.
Mister Farmer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next agenda item is communication, Tina, any communication?
No.
Uh, city clerk's report?
Nothing.
Comment by staff, I don't know who staff is out there, but I'd like to, if you start from uh, city manager, then uh, who is out there if they can make any comment?
Uh, sure, I can, uh, Chief Sockman, do you have any comments?
So, um, the only comments I wanna make is that we have been working hard, our staff is absolutely amazing, our morale is high. Um, doing a great job taking care of them, the city staff, uh, every day communicating, which is passed on to the, the troops and so uh, so I think that that's really important to, to let everybody know in the community that uh uh, in the police department, uh, our, our staff are all working and, and we're doing a good job and trying to keep the uh, community safe. Uh, I really encourage everybody to look out for their uh loved ones and the people, and the neighbors and everything because uh, like I was discussing earlier that uh, not everybody deals with this crisis the same and, and so we've seen our calls for service uh change um, um, due to some of the issues with nineteen, so uh, we also, also wanna thank all the c- community, the support has been overwhelming, the calls, letters, everything that's coming in, I, I just I just really wanna thank our community, they've been uh extremely supportive uh during this uh crisis and shelter in place.
Thank you.
Mike Selling, any, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing really specific to add, but I would just very much echo the chief's comments, I think uh, we've just got an amazing, you know, uh, group of folks here at the city and uh, you know, who are, who are working very hard and serving this community through this crisis and and, and I think we've got a equally, if not more so, fantastic community that's uh been very supportive in return, so um, yeah, I'm just uh considering myself very blessed to be a part of it, thank you.
Chris Wrights.
Yeah, a couple of updates, uh, one on the Gulf Market Community Plan, as you all know, we canceled the March thirtieth community meeting. Uh, we will reschedule that meeting as soon as we get more clarity on the COVID nineteen crisis and when the shelter in place order ends, stay tuned for news on it. And then, I think you all got a copy of the Corium Boulevard Plan document. We do have that tentatively scheduled for Planning Commission in March, but I do wanna say that if the, I should say in May, we have it scheduled for May for Planning Commission. If the shelter in place order continues through May, we will reschedule that meeting because I think it will be important to get the community there, so, those are my updates and thank you.
Uh, Claire Tyson.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Armando Solis.
Yeah, I just wanna thank my staff also for all their hard work that they've been going through at the market, my park staff are out there trying to keep everything going, um, just wanna remind council that uh, during this time of year, it's uh with the rain and the sun, the rain and the sun, you're gonna see a lot of growth out there. Um, my staff are trying to help um subsidize some of that uh, the mowing out there in some of the larger parks. And uh, please be patient with the weeds as these next couple of months are gonna be really bad, so, that's it.
Stephanie Van Steen.
Yes, good evening, council, um, I just wanted to share that we've been trying to keep our human resources webpage updated. Um, especially during the COVID nineteen, we've had some safety updates. Um, we've also created a link for leave of absences due to the family's first coronavirus act, that's the new page, uh, sick lead and emergency FMLA information. We've sent out all the information to the employees through email, but they can also access the information on our webpage as well.
Thank you. So I think that that's the staff, Tina, I'm not sure if you had anything or you have your own separate report. So I want the council to know that notwithstanding Corona or COVID nineteen, the coronavirus, we remain hard at work on the development of our new two-year budget. That is taking a lot of time and I want to compliment staff. Claire Tyson, our finance director, Michelle Neely, our budget and revenue manager and Matt Boring, our accounting manager, who are leading up the the finance team's effort on that. They and and their staffs within the finance department have been very busy on things as well as the departments. And so our days have been filled with numerous conferences just like this where we're looking at each other over computer screens and iPads and things like that. We're able to all look at the same information as we work at developing the next two-year budget and of course, all with an eye and and a commitment to to provide a balanced budget. And so coronavirus will make that much more challenging, but I believe that we're equal to the task and so we're working hard on that. And then finally, with respect to the coronavirus and what we all face as a community, I want you to know that for for our business community and all of our commercial community partners out there, Amy Mendez, who is our Economic Development Manager, has been doing a wonderful job putting together a laundry list of information on the website on our coronavirus. You can get it by get to the business resource page by going to our coronavirus page. And it lists all of the state and federal resources that are out there for our local businesses to to access. And we were, of course, sharing that information with the Chamber of Commerce as well. A lot of work on Amy's part to respond in that way to the coronavirus on behalf of the city and in support of all of our commercial businesses. And then finally, I would just appeal to the community to follow the orders of our governor and the Sacramento County Health Officer in staying at home. It is one of the reasons why Galt's infection rate is low, but also one of the reasons why the Sacramento County rate is low and we've made such headway throughout the the state of California. It's difficult, it's hard, it is something that we will live with for a while, the after effects of it. But to the extent that anybody watches what is happening across our nation in other states, in New York, in Connecticut, in New Jersey, in Louisiana, in Illinois, we we want to avoid that level of infection rate. So please adhere to the stay-at-home orders, understand the the restrictions that the health officer and the governor have put in place are for our benefit and as a people, as 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 community, whether it's in Galt or Sacramento County more generally. So with that, I turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mondo has one more item.
Armando.
I apologize, I I forgot to mention that the Parks and Rec Department has created a virtual classroom for some of our classes like Tai Chi, fitness in the chair. So you can go to our website right underneath Parks and Recreation, you can find a lot of classes there. So some of these seniors that were going to our classes and some of some of our citizens that were taking some of these classes, they can actually go online now. And we posted them for free, just so people can still keep active. So I just wanted to remind you guys that we've done that. Thank you.
Sorry, one more item from the chief.
Yeah, and so I I apologize, I shouldn't have brought this up first time, but I just want to give a really big shout out to Lahine and Gail Weber. They overnight produced a hundred masks for the police department, cloth masks for our officers to wear. So it just, again, it goes along with the out for, you know, of support. I mean, just absolutely amazing. And so and then Lahine is also working today to get masks for the rest of city staff. So thank you very much to all of those people that are a member of that group. They they really came through in a big way with these masks, so.
Thank you, Chief. The next item is a comment by city council, councilmember Campion.
I just had one question. And it was, we had a comment by Calways, Rudy back earlier, staff, will you be providing a response to that request? I think we discussed this briefly.
Yeah, and so what we want to do is bring back that letter at your next meeting and we'll get that sent off.
Okay, thank you. That that's all I have.
All right, councilmember Lamson.
I believe she's having a connection problem. I think she's trying to.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I have, I have just a statement I wanted to 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 say in regards to, you know, the situation that we're all in here in 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 our community. And that is, you know, it's a scary time for everybody. And I just want everybody to know that that we, as your elected officials, are are here on your behalf to ensure that the city staff is doing its best to maintain critical services and infrastructure to our city. We have daily briefings, as as Tom mentioned earlier. He briefs the the council every single day. Sometimes I think we get briefed more than once. And he keeps us privy to everything that's going on from, you know, regular functions to any changes with cases, anything that's, you know, pretty much anything that that he feels is important, we get those updates. And I want to thank the staff, you know, for working through a hard time, even some that are working remotely to to do a job, which is which is very important to keep our city functioning in the midst of what's going on. And and, you know, a big thank you to the essential workers out there. I don't think a lot of people give them enough credit. I'm talking about your your grocery workers, your gas station, your restaurant people, people that basically have chosen to continue to work to provide these services to our community and putting themselves at risk to do so. I know grocery store workers especially, it's a very scary environment. And I just want to, you know, say thank you to to any of them that are watching that, you know, that we're thinking about them. And and of course, a big thank you to Galt PD. I know that, you know, these were, these, these men and women are working extra hard right now. Longer shifts, more patrols. I know we've had some issues in the community with vandalism and some things that I actually was a victim of some vandalism, but, you know, the shelter in place order has is is having its toll on on people and got a lot of more domestic violence calls and things like that. But our PD is working hard to keep our property safe, keep our, you know, keep our businesses that are closed safe. Those are, you know. But I want to remind everybody, you know, we got to do our job as parents and as citizens too. In this time, you know, everybody needs to be vigilant. And if you see something, say something. And everybody needs to be mindful of where, you know, their their children are and their their teenagers and such. They need to be keeping them home if possible and not, and especially after dark. We don't need, you know, juveniles out after dark. We, you know, we feel that these could be some of the 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 problems that are going on with the with the small petty things. So it's important that we as a community do our job. And, you know, everybody needs to seem patient. It's a difficult time, tensions are running high. I've heard some stories about people losing their temper with grocery store workers because they were out of a certain item or whatever. And I want to remind everybody that we're all in this together and then you need to be understanding about everybody's situation. And I know it's hard and and when you're cooped up in your homes, that that, you know, your emotions can get the best of you. But I I think overall, I've been happy to see the positive stories that have come out, you know, stories like Lahine and the masks, you know. I've seen several examples, I can't even think of them all right now, but where the community gets pulled together to try to do things to keep everybody sane, keep everybody from just losing their minds. I also think that a really good side effect of this is that in a time where we're all being asked to distance ourselves, that I think a lot of families are finding time to spend more time together, you know, time that they normally, you know, gets away from them because they're so caught up with their day to day with work and everything. But now their families eating dinner together and and taking walks and playing board games and and all of that. And I think that's a, that's a positive thing that's happening i- in a in a dark time. It's a, it's a silver lining and I think that that we need to be focused on those positive things. And that, so I encourage everybody to keep supporting each other, be safe out there. And, you know, hopefully this will all be over soon and we can all get through this together. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano, out there?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know it's a difficult time and and I had a conversation with city manager today. And I recognize that staff, staff time is being stretched really, really thin. You know, one of the things that continues to happen is, at least from a staff level, is budget development. And and that, I bring that up because I don't want this time that to lose sight of a couple of items related to budget. One is, a couple of meetings ago, I I brought up, once again, the fact that we need, I I think we need to look at reducing landscape of our landscape corridors and parks in terms of maintenance and things like that. And then I think that's a big piece of as we move into and, you know, next year with a new contract for landscape maintenance. I think that's going to be important. So I don't want to lose sight of that. And I would ask the city manager to at least put that back on the ticker. It may not be the highest priority right now, but I think, again, as we look at budget, budget development for the next two years and 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 costs to keep that in on the top of the list. I appreciate the Park and Recreation Virtual Exercise Programs. I think that was a pretty cool idea. And I know a lot of people have taken advantage of that. I am concerned going back to budget things about sales tax reduction during this time. You know, we're we're going, we're going to see it. And and so I think we just need to not not forget that that's going to be an issue moving forward and that we, you know, we were already in a position where it was going to be make for a tough time doing budget, budget items. And so now this on top of that is not going to make it any easier. And so whatever we can do to continue to support our local businesses would be awesome. I know there are a lot of people out there that that call in orders. I I think one of our local restaurants is now on DoorDash. I saw it online the other day. And so as you can, you know, really, you know, patronize these or these places, these businesses, the local businesses, whether they're locally owned or franchised, please do that. And and that will help help with our sales tax issue. And and again, I want to just one more time thank the staff and the community both for working hard and in getting through this very difficult time. So thank you so much. And I I would be also willing, city manager, to sit down with anybody regarding the drought tolerant ideas and and really getting that pushed forward. So we potentially have a little bit of an easier time with the budget coming moving forward. So I just offer that up.
Sure. And and just in quick response to your, your, your comment, I I do want you to know that the Parks and Rec staff has indeed been working on that assessment of the landscape and and potential cost reductions. And I I was provided some information this morning about seven thirty eight with respect to that. As you can imagine, I haven't had a a chance to review it, but we will be reviewing it in the context of our budget preparations for for the next two years. And I think that from from my quick review, he hit the nail on the head, at least in with respect to some of your previous comments and things to look at. And so I I'm not quite sure of the the results of that yet because I just haven't had time to look at it. But my my brief review of it was that it was consistent with what you had asked for. So we'll, we'll take a look at that, see if there are any potential savings that that could result from the the items that he has on identified on the the information that he provided me this morning.
And 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 thank you for that. And and just not to belabor the point, but I but I also feel like I could offer up some professional.
Oh, sure.
Because the contacts that I have in the professional world related to that. And they would, in fact, as late as about two weeks ago, I've had that kind of a conversation with some folks and they're, they're more than willing to help. So whatever, whatever we can do to 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 make that happen, that'd be awesome.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson, you out there or you left?
There, see me?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to say something, any comment?
Sure. Sorry about that. My internet server went down, so I grabbed, jumped on on my phone. And now I'm back. I don't know if anybody said it, but I just want to put my condolences out there for the family of Leanne McFadden. She passed away this week and she ran the Galt Strawberry Festival for twenty years. She was in the Chamber of Commerce for lord knows how many years. Chris, how many years was she on the Planning Commission?
Well, the whole fifteen years that I've been here, she's been on the Planning Commission. Maybe Councilman Campion can recall when she actually got on the Planning Commission. But I thank you for bringing that up. That was it's really a big blow to the Planning Commission. She was a longtime fixture there and a real asset to the community in that role as planning commissioner. And her, that loss will be deeply felt.
Yes, thank you really well. And with with the COVID and and this time, it's hard to have closure because I think that's about the third funeral that I know of or celebration of life, how, whatever you want to say, that's been put off until after we come out of quarantine. So that's tough on the family too. So just want to give all the city councils and the cities condolences out to the McFadden family. And thank you for your years of service to the community.
Thank you, Lamson. I I also would like to feel very sad about the McFadden family because with Leanne McFadden, I worked with her in in a planning mission almost six years. And she was great. She was like a teacher. She also helped a lot of other people. The other thing I would like to, you know, to the community, it's very hard time for everyone due to COVID nineteen. I just want to remind everyone to practice social distancing. Sometimes it's hard, but we really need to focus on that. During this time, try to only go outside for essential reason. Thank you to all our healthcare worker, grocery store clerks, law enforcement, truck driver and all other working through this time and putting their own lives at risk. Let's remain strong throughout this hope and we will see an end of this soon. Again, I would like to thank you all the staff member daily working hard, especially I will mention our city manager, Mr. Hagland. He give us the update every day I can see every minute. Sometimes I see two update. Thank you for it, for your hand. If nobody have no question, then I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone. See you next time. Goodbye.